I want to say. But you can read it. And we have a form to leave. Oh, in my.
Ten? I have a massive budget. I have ten. I have one whole box.
One whole box. I just need the one though.
Thank you, Jesse.
Good, okay. This meeting of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization, Inc., is hereby called to order November 10, 2021, 6:30. Tracy, if you could read the sunshine compliance statement.
Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the origins of NJSA 1046, the Open Public Meetings Act, by posting such notice in the townships website, by notification to newspapers on December 23, 2020, of the schedule for 2021, and by providing notice to the township clerk. A change of time to 6:30 was provided to the item Star Ledger and Tap on October 25, 2021, and posted on the township website on October 25, 2020.
Thank you, Tracy. Would you please stand and salute Frank?
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Jumanic Culligan here. Tracy Katz Levine here. Andrew Morgan.
Here, here.
Nadez Nickel here. Michael Parlevekio.
Here.
Richard Wasserman. Stephen Weiner.
Here.
Alex McDonald is not present. And Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
Thanks.
And Jesse is here in his place. Okay.
Thanks, Tracy. The Sid mission statement. The purpose of a special improvement district is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. Milburn Township Sid ordinance designates a new district management corporation whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of Milburn Township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement. We have approval of the minutes, please. This is approval of the minutes from October 14, 2021. They are attached to your packet and circulated. If there's no additions or changes to that, we have a motion to approve those minutes. Motion. Second.
Second.
Okay, I know for the vote, Andrew was not here at the last meeting. So do we need a roll call vote or?
You can do a roll call.
Okay, Jumanic Culligan.
Yes.
Tracy Katz Levine, yes. Andrew was not present. Nadez Nickel.
Yes.
Michael Parlevekio.
Yes.
Richard Wasserman.
Yeah.
Stephen Weiner.
Yes.
Thanks, Tracy. That brings us to public comment portion of the meeting. When invited to speak, come to the lecture and clearly state your name and address and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. When an audience or committee member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to tracy@explore@milburnshorthills.org. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes, and that's also for those who are, if anybody's joining us remotely, you'll also have three minutes to speak. Those who wish to participate in the meetings may do so in person with possible occupancy limits, as we know, or electronically by phone or computer via Zoom. I can note for the record, we have received correspondence from Jeffrey S. Feld, Alexander Lane, dated today's date, November 10. This is a lengthy letter, about five pages. We will include it in our record and will be available for everyone to read. We'll have that circulated. Is there anybody else? Anybody who's in the meeting room wish to come to the microphone for public comment? Nice trick.
Vicky Powell, 358 C Milburn Avenue. Just want to say, you guys, you're doing awesome. Everything is going well. It really is seeing it come to fruition. We're doing, it's just wonderful to see how the community, how the merchant spirit is. So just keep it up because I know there's a lot of this and you don't see a lot of this. And I'm here to tell you, there's a lot more people that they might not be in this room that are here in open arms and appreciate everything you guys are doing. So I just want to say that first. Second, I just wanted to, I looked over the packet tonight. I see that we're going to have a marketing and you're going to do social media. Just a couple of things, I think that's great because I think the social media is being a little stale. I think we need to do a little bit more original content. I think we're lacking in that. We're doing a lot of reposts, which is great to see what all the businesses are doing, but I think we need a little bit more original stuff. So I'll be happy to hear what you guys are coming up with. I also saw that you were talking about the next year Mudball Two. I think that's a fabulous idea. I think it was a great event. I think it's something that we can, should continue it because it wasn't limited to just one area. It was limited to businesses. It was limited, it was including the restaurants, it was including the shops. Great, I think it would be great if we did it for something that we can do a project and have the money go base that. I know I spoke to Nadez about that, and I think that would be a great idea. And I saw the mural was finally touched up. They did miss a spot. I have a picture if you want to see it, Jesse. But I hope that now that the mural's been touched up, that we shellac it like we were trying to do, but that old Sid imploded, so it never got done. But I think to keep the longevity of it, since it's such an icon in town and everyone uses selfies, everyone uses promotions. We were in talks to have it varnished, to keep it preserved. So I think you guys need to really look into that and see if there's room in the budget for it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicky. Just one thing I did want to add. I forgot, and Stephen reminded me, we are also on YouTube tonight, right? Streaming live, so we are multimedia. Anybody else wish to come up for a public comments? Okay. Do we have anybody over here? Okay, do we have a name up there? Perry, okay, Ms. Urso, hi. It's your turn to speak. If you want to just place your name on the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
She muted.
Oh, you're on mute, Ms. Urso. We can restart you.
Hello?
There you are. We can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm just running around tonight.
Understood.
Thank you for your time.
Just put your name on the record and then we'll get started. Thanks.
Okay, I'm sorry. Perry Urso, 514 Milburn Avenue in Short Hills. So in accordance to your minutes, it doesn't reflect answers to comments I made at the October 18, 2021 meeting. In the minutes, the executive director states that he was confused that I'm complaining about events, and that's not what was stated. Why does he feel the need to put blame and attack me for justifying what the events are largely held downtown? There is no room for this type of unprofessionalism and arrogance. In fact, my comment stated, where does it say within the ordinance or the bylaws that the executive director can have an event, use private property without prior consent from property owners? No insurance endorsements, holding the property owner's harmless, and proper permitting? Where, and unfortunately, there were, where there were no records found. Now, how is this even possible? Secondly, where in Dominique Urso's statement from the same October 18, 2021 meeting, that she ever mentioned anything about Enzo's requesting a refresh grant monies for a sign? These are personal attacks on our business, and we will not stand for the continual harassment. Business owners must be held responsible to fully understand their lease and to do proper research of their environment. It should not be the responsibility of taxpayers to fund normal expected business expenses. Funding businesses have nothing to do with being a welcoming township. Business owners should be prepared with capital to pay the normal business operating expenses of owning a business. They should have prior, they should have the proper insurance and reserve for emergencies, occasional business interruptions, and disruptions. This is the cost of doing business, even sustain ourselves during a worldwide pandemic. And lastly, I hope that Mr. Wasserman has brought to the board tonight my comments from the last night's TC meeting concerns. That instead of Mr. Grillo taking selfies around town, but rather going through the three hundred some odd refresh and Ida relief grant applications very carefully. What is going on isn't a pre-creation buy-in, but rather an after-the-fact cover-up. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'll look forward to hearing answers to my questions and comments. Good night.
Thank you. If anybody else online? Nope, nobody else? Last call inside the room? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Mr. Grillo, if you wanted any response to public comments, I don't know that anything really called for it, but it's up to you.
So thank you for everyone that came out tonight. We have some fresh faces, three of them, but fresh faces nonetheless. Pretty good for a municipal meeting. Thank you, Vicky, for your words and thank you for your support. Regarding Ms. Urso's question concerning the minutes, I'm looking at the minutes right now. The question that her daughter Dominique asked is item number five, and it says, quote, "Asked about gifting of signs, will they be able to get funds for signs having nothing to do with Ida?" So I don't know who "they" is. I don't know if that is Enzo's. If memory serves, I don't think it was a question about Enzo's specifically, but businesses in general. So I think that perhaps Ms. Urso is confused regarding her question. Additionally, the sign question was related to the Explore Refresh Grant, not the Hurricane Grant. So I know that we're putting a lot of money on the street. We've got a lot of programs and they can get confusing. So hopefully that answers her question. Additionally, she mentioned the Ida and Refresh Programs. There's over three hundred pages of applications. That was requested via Oprah from Ms. Pasternak, probably about a week, ten days ago. I provided her with all the content of all the applications. There's over eighty applications. Some of them are non-qualifying, but there are over almost four hundred pages of applications. This isn't the first time that Ms. Pasternak or Ms. Urso have alluded to some type of criminality or some type of misuse in these grants. They've accused elected officials of benefiting. No one has actually said to me, this property is a conflict, this property is in question, please look into it. So those types of hollow accusations are not appropriate and they're not substantive. However, if any one of those folks wants to address a specific property, a specific owner, a specific tenant, all they have to do is send me an email and I'll look into it. But as of this point, I want to go on the record that no one has given me a particular address, owner, tenant whatsoever, other than just these allusions to some type of impropriety.
Thanks, Stephen. Moving on, Township Committee Report, Richard Wasserman.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chair. So from the Township Committee, last night, Mr. Mollman and I, well, Jesse and I had a five-hour, had a five-hour meeting. It was a long one. So there was a lot of business, a lot of business discussed. I would say, I would say, you know, the highlight, the highlight of the meeting was the Township Committee has appointed seven longtime members of the community to the, to the flood, you know, to the flood committee. Committee man Vinayek and I are co-chairing this effort, and we intend on doing everything we can to mitigate future floods. And we're, right now, we're working with Congressman Malinowski. We're working with Assemblyman McKeon. We're working with our county engineer. We're working with our local engineers from Mot McDonald. And so it's going to be a long-term effort.
Sorry to interject. I was just informed we needed a motion to close public portion that we didn't have yet. Sorry about that.
Never done it in my life. But okay, a motion to close, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
Second. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Let me just pick up where I left off. Anyway, anyway, further to what I was saying. So, so one of the highlights was that the Township Committee appointed seven longtime members. Most of the members have engineering backgrounds. Mr. Vinayek and I are co-chairing this effort. We've been meeting with other public officials, with county engineers, and we're very excited, excited, have a lot of energy to go forward and to do everything we can for the township, for our businesses, to mitigate future floods, and we're just getting started. So with that being said, the other item I wanted to bring up tonight was that we have a lot of open positions on township commissions, committees. So if anybody here is interested in doing some more volunteer work, we have, I could, I could offer you some ideas of some other opportunities. The town would be thrilled if more people applied. There are volunteer interest forms that are on the township website, but please, if you're interested, if you have some time to give to your township, you know, consider, consider some of our other committees. You'd be helping the township a lot, and I just wanted to throw that out. So those are, those are my two items.
Thank you, Richard. Moving along, first, welcome Jesse here to our meeting, and you're up for a business administrative report. Okay, no report. You're going to do great here. Next, treasurer's report, Stephen.
No report. No, I'm kidding.
I took a lot of time to prepare that report.
You'll catch up on that five hours.
It will be brief, though. So as posted on the website, really covering the month of October, but as of November 1, our bank balance was seventy-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and some change. The monthly budget is broken out as usual. I would bring your attention to the item. It says streetscape and aesthetic improvements. That is the Morris Township Beautification Project, and it shows year-to-date zero. But I guess from the past few days, we got an invoice, we paid, cut it. So next month, you'll see the payment for that because the project is complete, as I understand it. So all the planters are in, and I think it looks great. So the original budget, just to remind everybody, two hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The projected cost, now this varies every month. As we get closer to the end of the year, though, it's obviously getting more accurate, but it's projected to spend two hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. There is that difference of about thirteen thousand dollars, which will be, whatever difference ends up for the year will be carried forward into the next year's 2022 budget. So I guess that's it. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments on that report?
Question that, I don't, maybe we'll talk about it later, but the Ida grants?
It's another report.
It's another report?
Yeah, different account.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jumanic, you save that for later on?
I was just curious if we were going to be covering.
Okay. All right. I've got a soft spot for the attorney's report, so Ryan Cooper.
Thank you. So thank you. In the board's packet this evening are contract changes or red line of the Explore Milburn Short Hills Incorporated's bylaws. These bylaws were adopted at the formation of the corporation. The Governance Committee met to discuss potential changes. They're largely clarifying language changes. I'll walk through those in a second. So after that conversation, further discussion with the executive director, I've taken those notes and made, you know, proposed revisions to the bylaws. And just to talk about the process before we get into the, the actual vision. So the process for amending the bylaws, should the board want to go ahead with that, per the bylaws, and that's an article towards the end. A motion can be made at this meeting to adopt them. That motion can be seconded. That motion will not be voted on at this meeting. The second meeting date will be scheduled for that motion to be voted on, presumably your next meeting. It doesn't have to be. You can certainly set a separate one. That is when the motion will be voted on. If that motion carries, these amendments will go to the Township Committee for their approval. If approved, no further action by this board, the bylaws are deemed amended. If they are rejected or sent back with amendments, then there will be further action discussion at this board level. So with that said, I will summarize, you should have also received a summary of them. The change Article One, to clarify that the offices of the Sid can be occupied anywhere within the Sid, not just in the downtown district. We all know there are five. Article Three, this can be confusing when you're dealing with nonprofits. In the for-profit corporation sector, you have shareholders, and by law, certain corporate actions and changes need to be validated by shareholders. Nonprofits don't have shareholders. They have members. And in this case, that's Article Three addresses that. It establishes that the members of the corporation are the properties that are assessed within the Sid district and the commercial tenants, in a nutshell. Where required by statute, a vote of the membership, that this is laid out in Article Three. There are some clarifying changes, including at the end of 404, there were some inconsistencies in the bylaws with respect to the calendar year, the Sid's annual meeting, which we're at today in November, and the budgeting process. So some of these changes are to reconcile those and allow the executive director and the board to engage in that budgeting process in time for this annual meeting in November. Relay that information to the Township Committee and allow the Township Committee to then incorporate it into its fiscal budget for the following calendar year. So you'll see a number of those changes, including 407. I'm on to Article Five. There is an advisory board incorporated within the bylaws. This is to add the aspirational objective of having that advisory board be reflective of all five of the districts. Article Six establishes certain standing subcommittees, four in particular. It designates the bylaws and governance committee to serve as personnel committee. Clarifies that the board establishes the membership of those, of those subcommittees. And then it also clarifies, and very standard provision, that this board can create ad hoc committees as the purposes of the Sid require. So you may, you know, most boards and committees will have longstanding ad hoc committees, some temporary. For instance, you could have created an Ida, right? Ida Grant Review Subcommittee. That will serve its purpose, and that purpose will expire, and so it's not going to be a permanent committee. Moving on, again, clarifying language is in Article Seven regarding the executive director, deleting some cross-references that were inconsistent and just typographical errors. Let's see here. Article Nine, there was discussion about authorizing the executive director to lowering the authorized amount. So above any expenditure by the Sid above five hundred dollars, currently it reads one thousand dollars, but we're lowering that limit to impose a heightened level of compliance and oversight by the board. So any spending over five hundred dollars is going to be subject to further authorization. 903 is some of the date reconciliation I was talking about, the connection to the annual budget. And those, in sum and substance, are the amendments. Again, if you're curious, Article 14 was a specific article, not changed, but that references the procedure for modifying and adopting the bylaws. So I apologize if I went through those quickly, but I wanted to go through those at a high level to present it to you verbally in a narrative and then provide for some time for questions if there are any.
Okay, Ryan, thanks. That was a comprehensive explanation, but easy to digest. And as you did mention, we were born with these bylaws. We tried to change what we thought we could change early on, and then it was kind of, let's live with these a little bit and see how we evolve. And then, as Ryan explained, our bylaws have now evolved with the reality of what we've been doing. Just so I'm clear, tonight, the action, well, not necessarily an action, but the activity to be taken would be a motion as second to approve the recommendations, but no vote?
That's correct. So the formal action, if this board is inclined to move forward with these amendments, is a motion to amend the bylaws as set forth in this document. That motion would require a second, and that is where the formal action would end for this evening.
And then they come back.
The chairperson, Mr. Chairman, is to set a secondary meeting for a vote on that motion.
Sure. Now, is it appropriate to open to questions? Or is there any questions? Yeah, from the board, if anybody has any questions on these.
Just, again, a procedural, do we have to motion today to approve these? Or do we, you know, review them in our own time, and or should we open a discussion about them?
Well, that, you know, that raises a good question. If we approve them today and then vote, and between now and the next meeting, there were some changes made, would we have to start at square one?
So if there were an amendment, yes. So what would happen, just to put too fine a point on it? A motion would be made in terms, this evening, subsequent discussion. At your next meeting, there would be a motion to amend the amendments. That motion, that amended motion, would then be subject to the same procedure.
Okay, so then we wouldn't, they wouldn't advance, let's say, we did those amendments, it wouldn't advance to the township committee until the subsequent meeting? Or after the subsequent?
And just please keep in mind, obviously, we're heading towards the end of the year, and a lot of people's minds are at deadlines. There's nothing that stipulates that this has to be done at any particular deadline. So if members felt more comfortable taking this home and reading it and digesting it, we could absolutely start this process again at our December meeting and then take action in January and then subsequently provide it to the township committee. So there is no hard and fast deadline. It's just a good time of the year to have this discussion, since we've now had these in place for a little over a year.
And I just have a question. My understanding is, once we confirm any of the amendments on the bylaws, then they go to the TC for approval.
That's right. So by ordinance, the township committee is going to be the ultimate authority in approving any amendments or bylaws.
Sure. Mr. Cooper, it's been referenced by certain members of the community that, that amending bylaws or refreshing bylaws is an indication that those bylaws are deficient and therefore that the organization could be deficient. Could you speak to the value of going through this with a fine tooth comb as we have for the last three months? And why it's important that these bylaws are updated to be more accurate?
Certainly. So, yeah, I would reject the, absolutely the contention that the amendment process is indicative of any deficiency. It's healthy, and that's why there is a amendment process. You know, it's, it's baked in here because, one, you're going to implement the bylaws and then start living with them. And, and as you, you operate as an organization, you're going to see the need to make changes on an operational level. As, as the chairman said, as I mentioned, right, these were adopted, you know, before this board met for the very first time. Now this, this organization's been in operation for now, for a year. It makes, it's actually this board's fiduciary obligation to review these amendment, to review these bylaws and look for ways to amend them to more accurately reflect how the corporation's operating and, and operating efficiently. And as I mentioned, some of these amendments are enhancing the, the compliance function that this board gets to serve and therefore enhancing your corporate controls. So I think in some respects, these are clarifying, and in other respects, the substantive changes are improving the corporate governance overall of the city.
Thank you. And, and there are a number of things, if the board felt more comfortable taking these home, digesting them, I think that's fine. Steve explained, I'm glad you did it. There's no real deadline to these, it's just came up at this time. So if, if anybody wants to make, you know, pass on this for now and hold it till next, next month, that's fine, too.
You can't speak, Jomani can speak into the mic.
I, I would prefer if we could, you know, pass for this meeting, so I could take them home, review them in my own time. It's just, I mean, there's nothing in here that seems, you know, questionable, but I wouldn't mind digesting a bit more.
Okay. So we don't need to take any motion to adjourn this to another meeting?
Nope, nope. So this, this, this was the attorney's report. I've presented the bylaws, and I've appreciated the board's questions on that. And in the interim, I'm always available for additional questions. And then this, this matter could be placed on the agenda again at the next meeting.
In December, okay. That's, that's great. Thank you, and thanks for your work on this.
My pleasure.
And to our bylaws committee, personnel bylaws committee. All right. Mr. Cooper, you have another item?
Yes, so the other item under the attorney's report is my firm's proposal for the Cid General Counsel work for the 2022 calendar year. First of all, thank you very much to this board. We've greatly enjoyed being general counsel to the Cid. It's been rewarding, it's been engaging, it's been fun to see the, the hard work put into revitalizing and ensuring the success of downtown Milburn and all of the Cid districts. So we would love the opportunity to continue in that role for 2022. This is our proposal. It's relatively straightforward, but again, try and walk through it at a high level. We are proposing to continue to serve at an annual fixed fee of $14,400. It works out to around a monthly retainer of $1,200 as part of that service. As described in here, we will be outside general counsel, available to the board, the executive director and staff for all the regular legal questions and issues that arise, questions and advice in connection with contracts, corporate governance, to a degree, corporate governance in the operational sense, and things of that nature. Should additional projects arise outside that scope, so for instance, we can advise on interpreting the bylaws. The bylaw amendment project was a separate project. That work, we would engage in a discounted rate of $170 an hour, slightly less than half of our customary rate. And, and that is it. We have our, our billing procedures, they have not changed this year. And, you know, we welcome the opportunity to continue in this role. It's been an enjoyable partnership, and we hope it can continue.
Thank you, Ryan. And, and I just, I appreciate, just speaking for myself, I appreciate the fixed annual fee because from our side, it gives us predictability, certainly, and it gives visibility to what the legal fees are to the community who sees, every month sees our bills. From the lawyer's side, I know it's not only always easy because it's an unpredictable engagement, and that's why oftentimes you see hourly rate because it's whatever you're working. So I, I do appreciate this. And for what's outside the scope of the work at the, at the discounted rate, I, I think that's, that's certainly a fair rate in, in public sector type work. So I do appreciate that as well. And then, you know, we hope we don't have too much outside the scope, not for money-wise, but for other angst and everything else. But if it's there, I think we really appreciate that that's built into this engagement. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cooper?
So, you know, where you, where it talks about your fee and, and what, what's covered, you know, the Oprah requests and attending meetings and general, you know, governance issues. What about questions from the board? Let's say we, you know, email you a question, something that comes up.
Yeah, that's, that's all inclusive. It's hard to, you know, it's hard to specify with exhaustive and exhaustive and, and all-inclusive list. We're, we're generally available, and we have been, I like, I hope, to the board and the staff for your questions, you know, generally, whenever, I mean. So I know we've, you know, I don't want to get into specifics for obvious reasons, attorney-client privilege. We have fielded questions from the board members over this past year. Really, as a general, it may even be easier to define what's not within the scope. And it's generally, if the board or the Cid is going to engage either in a project or a specific discreet matter, that is not something you would expect to arise in just the day-to-day operations. If you get involved in a, a legal dispute, that's not just part and parcel of your everyday operations. That would be separate. Amending your bylaws, while it's a very healthy and regular thing to do, it, regular doesn't mean every year, so that's a separate project. So it's, it's, it's outside the scope are, are projects of that character that hopefully has been a little bit more illustrative of what we're, we're referring to.
I'd actually like to, like this, too. Thank you for your service. You know, I think that this, this is really our, you know, our, this is our maiden journey, you know, as an organization. We've handled, I know that according, according to Steve, Steve's notes, that we've administered giving out grants for, you know, to 70 businesses. It's a big responsibility, but I will tell you that I, I sleep a lot better knowing that we have sound legal counsel on our side, you know, when we're handling money and distributing it. So, but, so I want to thank you for your service. I think, I think you're providing a very valuable service at a fair price.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Ryan? Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Thank you very much. Next up is our executive director report. Are we doing that yet, or is there executive session on this? Oh, okay, I thought we were having a little discussion. Oh, sure.
We did it last.
Okay, I just see it up. Okay, it's something else, got it. Sorry, I'm on it. Okay, so before we move on, let's have a motion to approve the legal services contract that, with Cooper LLC. Can I have a motion?
It's a move.
And a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote for that?
Jomani Coligan?
Yes.
Tracy Castlevine? Yes. Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Adesh Nichol?
Yes.
Michael Parlovickio?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Steven Weiner?
Yes.
Sounds like it's moved. Great. Okay, now we can move on to executive director report.
Just pursuant to that item, I do have a final copy for you to execute when we go into closed session. So you don't have to worry about the one in your packet. The executive director report has quite a bit tonight, but I do want to defer to Ms. Jackie Lieberberg, who's going to talk about a very exciting event on December 5th, and all of you have in your packets.
Thank you, Mr. Grillo. The Cultural Engagement, Diversity and Arts Committee will be sponsoring a Milburn Strong acrylic painting workshop on Sunday, December 5th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. For the record, we, there is a QR code. This will be on the township website, this is on our Explore Milburn Short Hills and other various websites and, and social media sites. And it's basically a nod to, to Hurricane Ida. And the themes to be explored on the canvas will be resilience, strength and gratitude. And we're grateful that educators, art educators from One River, Arti Vino, and Jesus from Jay Nunez Gallery, along with other community artists, will lead these painting workshops. They will be held at the Bauer Center. There'll be refreshments, of course. And at, at a later date, the, these canvases will be a 12 by 12. All instruction and materials will be provided. Each canvas will cost $20 to participate, of which $10 will go to Ida Relief. And the idea is to, for the community to, to, to take, basically use this opportunity to reflect and look at Ida and the event of both its impact on our community as well as climate, look at climate change. There is a QR code that, that you can register online, it's all electronic. If you have any questions, please contact milburn@onereverschool.com for guidance. It will be first come, first served, and obviously, space is limited when within Bauer. If you are a professional artist outside the scope of this instructional tutorial, you are also encouraged to participate. So reach out to One River, and they can tell you how to do that. Once again, the date is December 5th, Sunday, rain or shine, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And I really want to thank Steve Grillo for his help and participation and assisting the Cultural Engagement Committee on executing this event. So touche, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie. The rest of the calendar update will go in chronological order, actually going backwards. October 25th, we had a really nice merchant mixer at Jack's Lobster Shack on Upper Milburn Avenue. We had, this is for Upper Milburn Avenue and for the Short Hill Station businesses. We had a good turnout, probably about 30, 35 people. Good networking, good connections, a lot of folks on Upper Milburn, especially are new businesses. And so they had a good chance to, to meet a, a bunch of established folks, especially some at Short Hill Station. So in fact, the networking was, was very good, the food was excellent. I strongly encourage folks, if you have not been to Jack's yet, go out and, and check that out. We were in their second floor private room, which is a bit of a rarity in, in Milburn. So if you're looking to do a private function, they do have a space. So an excellent event there. That was our third merchant mixer so far. We're going to be hosting one segue. On December 6th, the plan is at 5:30 to do a Wyoming Business Center Merchant Mixer. That'll be at Jade Lake, which is a Chinese restaurant located out there. Lovely, lovely restaurant as well. And so we're going to roll those invitations out shortly. So that'll be December 6th at 5:30. That will complete all of our mixers for this year. We have done all of the outer districts, we have not done one in downtown yet. Obviously, there's just an enormous number of businesses downtown, so we'll probably have to break that up into a couple of different mixers next year. But overall, it's been very successful. I think we've done a really good job in terms of networking and getting the brand out. We have a little bit of housekeeping, December. We do have a meeting scheduled for December 9th. We have a couple of folks with conflicts, so we just wanted to see if there was a consensus on moving that meeting to 6:30 as normal on either December 8th or 16th. Does anybody have a preference?
I can't do the 8th.
You can't do the 8th? Then how, you go first, so you win? Does, does the 16th look good for everybody? No. No good for Richard?
Should we consider keeping it the same and see, or wait up for him?
It's up to you guys.
What, what, the original date was the?
Was the 9th.
Who has a conflict?
I know Michael has a conflict.
I have a conflict on the 9th.
As well? 8th and 9th?
I'm being difficult.
Okay.
I'm at a 9th and on the 8th, yeah.
And the two of you wouldn't be able to make it on the 16th?
Steve, when was the board training? Was that that day or no?
It was going to be, but due to a scheduling change, which we have now, the consultant couldn't make it, so we've moved that to January.
Okay.
That's better.
Yeah. So this would just be a, a board meeting where we would take action as usual on, on certain items.
So let's shift to the 16th, is that better for you?
I mean, I, anytime it's closer to Christmas, to be honest, with my store and everything else is harder for me, but I will try my best.
Me too.
Okay. So is consensus the 16th? At 6:30?
You, does it help to move it a half, back a half hour?
It actually does.
To 6 or 7?
To 7. Is that helpful? You're fine? Jomani, was that helpful to you? Okay.
Okay, so then this would be December 16th at 7:00 p.m.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you need to make a motion to?
I think we do.
And a roll call vote?
We'll take a motion to adjourn our December 9th meet. Change the date of our December 9th meeting to December 16th at 7:00 p.m. in this room, Milburn. We have a motion to approve that.
Motion.
And a second? Second, okay. Roll call, please.
Jomani Coligan?
Yes.
Tracy Castlevine? Yes. Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Adesh Nichol?
Yes.
Michael Parlovickio? Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Steven Weiner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the final scheduling item is just an update. We were originally scheduled to have a board meeting on January 13th. We had planned to have our board training at our December meeting, but as I just mentioned, the change of that date created a conflict, so I spoke with the consultant, and she's available on January 13th, which is the standing date for the meeting anyway. So just so it's on your calendars, we'll have that meeting a little bit earlier because it's probably going to be about a three-hour training. So just, you know, circle that on your calendars, that'll be January 13th at 5:30. But no action needs to be taken at this point. But no action needs to be taken at this point. Before I get into some more.
Steve, sorry, just a question. Should we have our dates overall for next year or not yet? Do we want to talk about that in the next?
It's a little bit of yes and a little bit of no. So the calendar that I inherited has dates populated. It's the second Thursday of the month, or I think that's what we meet on. But we will need next month to establish a formal schedule. So that'll be something that we'll present at the next board meeting. Because we we have talked about potentially reducing the number of meetings or staggering them a bit more. So those are all discussions that I can have with the Governance Committee before our next meeting in December.
It sounds like we should do a public notice. We can do maybe one notice then for the December and January.
Correct, we can do that.
Yeah, I don't think January is even noticed at all yet.
No, it wouldn't be.
Okay.
Okay. So just a couple of of other items. I lost one of my notes. So a lot of good news in town. Paper, Ribbon and Wrap is new, their new home, 271 Essex. I've written that so many times on social media and email blast. So now I remember the address. So congratulations to you. As was stated in public comment, I did take a selfie today and put it on social media. I thought it was a cool idea, but it was actually at the selfie wall at Highline Fashion's new location, 306 Milburn Avenue. Great, cool concept to have a selfie wall. Go in there, take a picture. It's really neat. That, I believe, is going to be their permanent space. Yeah. They've done a really nice job in there. So also, two other folks that are back in business post-storm, Design Hub, which is right at the corner here across from Starbucks. Marla and I just went in there tonight. We filmed a video. They just reopened a couple of days ago. Place looks great. They're back up and running. And then we were before this meeting at Jay Nunez Gallery. He had his opening tonight. He also has one at 4:00 p.m. this Saturday, which I've circled circulated to you folks via email, but I encourage the public to come out. The gallery, I was in there when there was no floor because the water took it away. It looks incredible. It's a really great space. He's a great addition to the the streetscape. And Jesse remarked, he brings color to the storefronts because it is a bright, bright artistic gallery. So we're very excited to have him as well. So I encourage everybody to go and stop in and support him. He's he's been great during COVID and created the Milburn Strong Post COVID. Ida, that's another problem. But he's done a great job with that. And then also we have some new businesses coming in. Moonshine, Moonshine opened this week. Yep, they opened, I think it was Monday night was their first opening. We do have Mochi Moly Doughnut, which is moving in at 315B, Milburn Avenue. Tonino Cigars is opening next to Taste Buddy on Upper Milburn Avenue. That's at 515B. That was your former temporary neighbor. You know what my my address sheet looks like? Amy Joe Pilates is a new business that is opening up at 109 Main Street. That was the old Bella Organici, your neighbor. So that space is now fully occupied. Angelique Teralong came in at our last meeting. She's at one of the units, and then this is a Pilates retail clothing and studio. So that's opening probably early December from her perspective. Pokeball opened at 345 Milburn Avenue, just, I think, probably 10 days ago, two weeks ago. And then I was just yesterday at Adore Salon, which is at 32 Essex. And so that's kind of closer to the La Pergola section of Essex, if you can visualize that. And that's a really large space, beautiful salon, and they're very excited about opening up. They've only been there about two weeks. So a lot going on in that respect. Some notes, this is from our business administrator. There will be free parking throughout town from Thanksgiving to the end of the year. So we'll certainly get that messaging out. Time limits do apply. He was very strict about that. One-hour parking on Milburn Avenue between Town Hall and Main Street, which is a reduction from two-hour parking, which is what we have today. And that was something we proposed in our parking study. That'll be brought to the TC for approval as a pilot program in January. That would be a temporary thing, just to see how it works, see if it flows. If it works, great. If it doesn't, we'll be able to rescind that. So that'll be a bit of an experiment. And then there will also, this is something that also came out of our study, approximately 10, 15-minute parking spots for pickup will be brought brought up for approval as well as a pilot program to the TC in January. That was another item that came from our study. I mapped that out, put some priority locations in, and so the TC will have a chance to review that and potentially act. So I think all good news in terms of of vehicle flow and and our hard-earned dollars being spent on a study and seeing results. So I thank the TC and I thank the deputy mayor for embracing some of those ideas. With that, I have a video to play for you. It's only 30 seconds, so. You're probably all saying, God, it's two hours, so he stops talking. So as you guys know, and Stephen had mentioned, we did complete our beautification project on Morris Turnpike. So last time you were here a month ago, I put together a video of some signs as well as some planters. We ended up completing the entire installations. Now there are eight planters. These large planters here will actually have our branding and logo on them. That's being ordered, and that'll be in the next couple of days. We'll get those. And then those large chloroplex signs have been installed throughout. There's five of those. That was because we couldn't get approval to put up banners, so we came up with a bit of a creative solution. So this is just to show you what Morris Turnpike looks like now. That's it.
I I just have a question.
Sure.
This beautiful seasonal planting, when the depths of the winter come, will the, will we be provide, will we be responsible for changing it out? Or will?
No, so so the ones that were planted are perennials. That's the right word, right? They will die, but they will come back.
Okay.
That was the intention. So and they're also pretty hardy, so they should last pretty, pretty decently into the winter season. And then. Not the mums, the mums will not. But I think overall, you know, the first part is, I'd like to continue putting more out there next year. I think this is a part of the town that really requires a lot of upkeep. Obviously, there's just so much vehicular traffic, kicks up a lot of dirt. There's tires, there's hubcaps, you name it. And so I think this is something that should become kind of an ongoing project for us is to allocate money towards not only just general maintenance, but also continuing to put out the planters and seeing just how things go over the next couple of months.
There is the TAM Beautification League. Maybe we can partner with them and kind of piggyback off of them when they.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
Steve, I have a question, too. When do we, when do we recheck? When do we take another look at our vacancy rate? I mean, I know the last time was not long ago, but with all the new businesses coming in, are we going to look at that quarterly or or maybe in January? Because I think that that's, that's for for this organization, that's like a vital statistic for.
Yeah, I I would recommend doing that every six months. So I think that would put us probably in late January, early February. I I would say a presentation to you at the February board meeting would probably be enough time that there's real data.
Steve, question on those signs on Morris Turnpike. Are those permanently affixed there or do they get moved away at some point?
They are not permanently affixed. They're they're placed with water, so they're pretty heavy. You can move them if you need to, but it takes a little effort. And then, as you see, I don't see the image, but they're they're meant to withstand wind. They're on springs because obviously there's quite a bit of wind and vehicular traffic going past. They can be moved throughout as needed. That was the intent is that, you know, if it's a place where it's impacting visibility or they keep getting hit by cars, which is not a good thing, but it happens. So we we can move those as needed.
They're not anchored into the.
They are not. If you want to go pick one up later, test it out, be my guest. So yeah, just to to your point, if February is meeting, I'll have a vacancy study updated.
Steve, do we have an update on some of the businesses who haven't reopened? Have you heard anything from any of those that they're planning on coming back?
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't know if we need to get into specifics. I think there's some folks where I think it's a bit of a a personal or business issue. But for the most part, what I'm hearing is that virtually everyone plans to come back. They've begun the construction process, and most of them are in the situation where they, like everyone else, are having difficulty acquiring materials. Whether the materials are exceptionally expensive and that's causing things to be delayed. But from what I'm hearing from probably, you know, the the eight or 10 most impacted businesses in in your former area, I would say that I think all of them probably, except for one, are planning to come back. Come January, February, as as construction gets slower and more expensive, I I don't know. I I'm just hoping that, you know, they they can come back. But I do think there's a possibility certainly that, you know, expenses or timing may may become laborious for them.
Question, maybe more for Richard, but some of my customers have been saying that still smells in that area. I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that.
Well, I know that there are a lot of the usually by your own.
Yeah, that whole, like even up to sneaker, even where the the new Highline, like that whole sort of stretch. I mean, I've noticed it myself, to be honest.
Well, I know that they're working. I know that there's a lot of work still being done, and I know a lot of the basements where I think a lot of the smell is probably coming out of the building from the basement. So I think that they're 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 remediating that. But I I agree, I actually smelled it also.
And is that like, would that be up to the building owners to remediate?
I think that's all, I think it's up to the building owners, and I know, but I know they're working on it. So hopefully with some good work.
But let's say they don't. Some of the lawyers might not maintain their buildings up to the same level. Is there some, is there a way of enforcing that they do remediate? Because I mean, it's like mold and mildew growth and it's all kinds of.
Our, you know, we have enforcement, we have enforcement officers, we have a health department. And I know that they're, they really are looking at, they really are vigilant and they're staying on top of it. And and I know that they're really making, they're doing everything they can to make sure that people are up to code.
Yeah. Sorry, a little off topic.
Yeah.
So the next item is a recap of the Hurricane Ida Business Recovery Fund. So all of you should have a spreadsheet in your packets. It's a two-page spreadsheet, just to make sure that you have the most current version. There's three white boxes at the bottom on the second page. That's a. It's towards the end of the packet. So and this is also distributed to the folks in here. So the the official submission that I included in the original packet that was posted was as of the posting date, which was Monday. But this is a daily change as checks come in, checks go out. So I just wanted to, since we had a board meeting tonight, I wanted to explain everything to everyone as as of today. So as you can see, 74 businesses have been approved for the program. We did receive more than that in terms of applications. However, some were not qualified because they were not within the CID. And then three of them, which are listed here in that first box, did not respond by the deadline to provide the documentation that I had requested. Certainly, if they do, I will bring it back to the committee. But as of tonight, they have not submitted anything. And they've been made aware multiple times that there was a deadline. So the simplest way to look at this chart is everybody in green, which is everybody, everybody as of today, has received at least one payment. For the most part, everybody is whole. We did sign six or seven checks tonight that'll be mailed out, and that will essentially conclude the project. So as you see here, anything in red is a check that has been written and distributed, but not cashed. So that's what what essentially is our exposure, right? It's been mailed to them. They haven't put it into the bank yet, but it's not in my hands. And so the best way to look at this is, if you look at where it says finances recap, A, B, C, D and E. A is the amount distributed thus far. That's $341,750 worth of checks that has been written. Uncashed in terms of round one, so those are, the way we looked at it is, some people got two payments, right? Someone that got $10,000, for instance, got a payment of five and a payment of five. Other folks got just one payment, and that's why you have multiple columns here. But simplest way to look at it is, there's $60,500 worth of uncashed checks that are existing at the moment. And so that's our total exposure. So when I look at my bank account and say, how many, what checks can I write? I obviously can't write checks in 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 excess of what I have in the bank account minus what is sitting out there that hasn't been deposited. So where does that get us? The final box here, 74 businesses have been funded. There's currently $73,000 in that account. We are allocating $5,000 for an independent audit. That was part of the MOU that we signed with the town. So that 5,000 will not be provided to a business. That'll be provided for the audit. So that leaves $68,000 available. 73,000 minus 68, 68 is, I'm sorry. $68,000 minus the 60,500 in checks that are outstanding right now means that essentially in real cash, we have $7,500 left. I did receive some additional payments today, $1,000 here, $500 there. So that number kind of fluctuates a little bit. But at this point, I would say, with the 7,500 available plus some money coming in, we're pretty much at the finish line of this project. When I do have available funds, I will try to distribute those to folks who could not get as much of an award as they would like because we just didn't have the funds in hand. But from this board's perspective, we're probably about 95% of the way done. So I will continue to award checks as money comes in, but we're we're pretty close to the end.
Steve, well, first of all, this is, I mean, thank you to you and the committee for coordinating a complex process. This is, just to state the number for us to all be clear. So the total money raised is basically 410,000, about 410, 402,250 plus the 7,500. So am I adding that right?
No, no, not 75, no, 402.
I'm confused, total raised. I'm not saying total awarded, total money raised. Because you're saying we awarded 402,250, but there's 7,500 remaining. So if I add those two together, I'm trying to clarify what's the total number that we brought in in fundraising.
Oh, oh, so you're talking 341,750 plus 60,500, right? So that gets you.
Another distributions, but she wants to know what we actually brought in.
That adds up to the 402,250, right?
Correct.
So you said we've awarded so far 402,250. And if all the checks are cashed, you're saying there's 7,500 still remaining?
I'm sorry, I, no, I didn't say awarded. Maybe I did say awarded 402. If I did, that was incorrect.
Okay.
No, we have awarded 341,750 that's been cashed. Distributed, that's that second box, the finances recap.
Okay.
So then, so 341,750 is gone. It's been put in the bank, cashed, done.
I understand. Okay, let's let you finish.
Then there's another 60,500 of checks that have not been cashed.
I understand.
Okay.
And those two numbers add to the 402,250.
Correct.
But then you said that there's 73,000 in the account, 5,000 of which is going to be for the audit.
Which leaves $68,000 available. But 68,000 minus 60,500, which is exposed, that gets you to the 7,500 that's available.
Right. So that's why I'm, again, trying to get to the total money raised to me would be the 402,250.
Yes.
Plus the 7,500, actually, maybe, why don't we just ask it that way? What is the total money raised?
Yes, the answer is.
What's the total money raised?
It's 402,250 plus 7,500.
Plus another five?
Plus five, yes. So we're looking at, what is that number? That's 402.
I think it would just be really helpful to have that number on the report, like total raised, total awarded. Yeah.
Okay.
I know it's kind of implicit in here.
So we're looking at 415, if you say it that way.
Right.
220 of which was from.
From the town.
From the town. And the other, let's say, 200,000 was through the donation process.
Correct.
And events.
And the mud ball.
And all the businesses.
Yes.
Doing programs and all the 800 or probably at this point, probably closer to 1,000 donors? 850, okay.
So I have another question, actually. So as more money comes in, like from this event.
Yes.
You know, we're half the money raised on December 5th. That will go into this account, but is there an additional process to review grant applications? And because it sounded like everyone is going to, has received and been paid what they've asked for.
Not what they've asked for.
Okay.
No, the vast majority have not received the full award. It's just, in in reality, if if I gave everybody what they asked for, we'd be at $5 million of of giving. So.
So, no, based on need and all the same criteria. So there is a need to continue to raise money, put it into this account, and under the same criteria, continue to pay out based on what. And under the same criteria, continue to pay out based on what was originally applied for by the business.
Correct.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Jermon, do you have a question?
It was basically kind of the same question, basically, that Steve asked.
So the committee will meet and assess.
Correct.
What's available and what's.
You're not accepting new applications, correct?
At this point, we haven't received a new application in probably two and a half weeks.
Yeah.
I do go into businesses and people say, oh, you know, this, this happened to me. I didn't know about the program. Very few and far between. Obviously, funding 74 businesses is a lot of businesses. So clearly the word got out, the process was simple, it was effective to do it this way. Do I expect more applications? Maybe one or two. But, you know, there's, there's also folks here that were underfunded, just because we didn't have the full amount of money that we could have used. So I'm going to prioritize those folks when we get additional funds in.
I have a silly question. Is there a mechanism to, to inform the, those individuals that have not cashed their checks? And do they have a statute of, is it, is there an expiration? So if they have not cashed it in 90 days, does it go back? Do we have any kind of mechanism or are we?
We, we haven't set one up.
Right.
I mean, eventually the check will go bad.
Right.
And, I mean, it doesn't necessarily affect our bottom line, right? Cause that money was allocated anyway. I mean, if you, I certainly can reach out to folks and ask them, hey, why haven't you cashed your check?
It does sound like a good idea, just in case somewhere there was a disconnect or they in the midst of everything going on, they literally.
Some of these were just issued.
Yeah, of course.
There's a bunch that were just issued, but I mean, there's probably, you know, eight or nine that they're sitting there.
But I think it begs the question that the next time we do this, you know, God forbid there's a, there's another, another storm or something and we have to, and we have to administer money like this. I, I think we should consider putting a 90-day.
Yes.
Putting a 90-day time limit. You know, because, you know, they don't want the money. I mean, we have other people that need it. And we, we want this money to be used for urgent, you know, for urgent problems.
I mean, it's, it's so, there's so, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, somebody's a cash check for 90 days, I don't know if they really need the money.
I, I wouldn't jump to that conclusion. I mean, there's only one back from September 30th. Most of them were just issued. And in like, within the last couple of weeks.
All I'm saying is that in the future, it should be something that we think about in terms of giving people a deadline. You know, here's, here's money. We expect it to be, you know, used, you know, in 90, within 90.
But I think it's also important, you know, let's, let's keep in mind that of 402 essentially requested, right? 341,000 has been cashed with another 60,000 pending. So thi- this program was hugely successful. And I think we hear it from the merchants every day that this was a lifesaver to many of them. They paid the rent for a month and they weren't open.
Right.
I think the way that it was executed, I, I think I did a good job. But, I would tell you, this has been a bear to track all of this is, because there's so much paperwork. Cause I've been super diligent about making sure that everything is transparent and clear. But, you know, just from the TC embracing the need for this money. If we didn't get that $220,000 from the TC, we would not have been able to do a program worth a damn. It's just, I mean, as Jackie pointed out, pretty much half of the distribution came from the township. And that went a really, really long way. So I can't understate that.
Yeah. And I will tell you from my colleagues, it was very heartfelt. You know, we're, we're here for our merchants. And people should know that when they set up shop in Melbourne, we're here for them.
And, and, sorry, go ahead, Steve. I was going to say, yeah, Steve, remind us around, I think you report to the township committee every month, like how it's going. And then there's an audit process at the end, as I recall, right?
So the timing's a little off with when we were authorized to utilize the township money. And then when those checks were actually cashed. So, long story short, I am going to be providing a written report to the TC for their first meeting in December, which I think is December 7th. So they will get an official report from me with this form, obviously updated, and a narrative explaining how the money has been spent. There was, and I'll get to the audit question in a moment. It was made clear in that MOU that this would be a one-time payment. And that the payment, if anything was not spent, it would be returned to the township. Obviously that's not the case, and I'll explain that in my letter. In terms of the audit, yes, we will have to submit to an audit, you know, in the beginning of next year. We'll, we'll talk to the municipal auditor, who's also our auditor, and just figure out the timing there. It's, I, I don't, I don't feel good for them because this is going to be fun to audit. Lot of money in, lot of money out.
On really, well, related to Ida, but on, so Explore did a great job in distributing the checks as quickly as humanly possible. I was wondering if you heard anything from the state grants that, I haven't heard of any businesses that have received anything from the state yet. Just curious if you have heard otherwise.
I, I have not. I've gotten that question a number of times. And I think, not to pat ourselves on the back, but I think this underscores the importance of the Cid and the township supported the Cid. We had numerous businesses who wanted to apply for FEMA. That was not possible. FEMA was not accepting. They were kicking people to SBA to get loans, not grants. A lot of people did not choose to do that. The governor's office was providing $5,000 grants. I have not heard of a single business that has received one yet. We have put $400,000 on the street to 74 businesses. That's a big deal. But it, it just shows why local government's so important, why entities like Explore Melbourne are important. And, you know, thank goodness we were here and able to facilitate and thank goodness we had the support of our TC. So there's no more questions. The chairman asked me to just give a, a report on where we are with the Bear Properties litigation. So it's actually not we as the Cid, but the township. And Mr. Cooper will speak in detail to it, but just on some background. Bear Properties is the corporate entity that is owned by Mr. and Mrs. Urso. They have Enzo's Trotteria on Upper Melbourne Avenue. They also own a couple of vacant storefronts on Upper Melbourne Avenue as well. About a year ago, they entered into a lawsuit against the township over the validity of the Cid. Recently, there has been some activity related to discovery in that case. Mr. Cooper can talk to some of the legal aspects. I know there's been some miscommunication in terms of mediation versus litigation. And we just want to make sure that we set the record straight on our end and of course, inform our board. So this is not any type of legal advice. This isn't any type of strategy. This is simply just an update and from what is publicly available.
Thank you, and thanks for that summary, Steve. So as the executive director summarized, so the, the Cid is not a party to this litigation. I think it's important from many respects, in particular in putting in context this summary. So because the Cid is not a party, I'm not a council of record in that litigation. Everything I'm going to report to you is, is based on my secondhand review of the record. I haven't been to any of these conferences, so there, there may be some inaccuracies since I, I don't have the firsthand experience of being there or benefit or pleasure. Depends on your perspective. So with that, with that caveat, so as the executive director summarized, the Bear Properties litigation is concluding the discovery process. Again, I apologize if this is an oversimplified view, but I, I feel like it can be helpful. Litigation is often confused or misunderstood. In a litigation, there is a discovery process during which parties exchange all the information that they have related to the claims and the defenses in the litigation. It's really exchange of documents and then often testimony. So my understanding is that process is just concluding. It is usually the lion's share of the work and the time that goes into litigation. And what would follow next would be trial, a trial date. I'm not aware that one has been set in this litigation, but a discovery is concluding. I would anticipate that one would be set in the coming months, probably be a few months from now. It'll also likely be virtual. Right now, Superior Court is still doing primarily virtual trials, particularly in civil context, which this case is. With respect to the mediation, I have heard a lot of that. And I do think it is misunderstood based on my review of the docket thus far. Excuse me. So in the Superior Court in the civil context, it is often mandatory that the parties in a civil dispute go to at least two hours of mediation. It is a mandatory process to put the parties together to discuss whether or not a case can be resolved. So it, and that is my understanding of where this case is at. Again, I have indirect knowledge. It's possible I'm, I'm incorrect on that, but based on my review and certainly my experience in, in dozens and dozens of litigations. This is going to court mandated two hours of mediation. It's not at all a reflection on the court's assessment of whether or not this case is suitable for mediation, should be mediated. It's certainly not, I've seen others try and extrapolate from that some belief as to the merits of the case. And I think that would be irresponsible to do because it's simply not what that process is for. It's a mandatory two-hour process because many cases are susceptible to mediation, but many cases are not. So, you know, this, this case may not fall into the category of appropriate for mediation, but nonetheless, it may go through that process. So, so that's where the mediation is. Trial date, I would expect, based on my review, if the discovery process is winding down. It can sometimes be extended by unforeseen or last-minute changes or conflicts or disputes over the sufficiency of the information that has been exchanged. So I can't make assurances as to whether or not there will be an extension along those lines. But then a trial, based on my review, I don't see a trial in this case being very substantial in length. So you would expect that to be resolved in relatively short order. Any questions?
When is the court-appointed mandated mediation meeting again? Do we know?
I, I don't believe the court's set a date for that. Typically what happens is the court will appoint, there is a roster of mediators for each vicinity or county. And it's an automatic process. They just go down the list. Next mediator on the list will be assigned to a case, provided there's no conflicts of interest between that mediator and the parties. Notice goes out to both parties and says, you know, Jane Smith has been assigned as your mediator. Mandatory two hours free. You must, you know, contact the mediator within X number of days if you're going to engage in this process or not. So as far as I can tell, I don't think that notice has gone out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. You're up to marketing and events and Marlon.
Right at it. Thank you.
As I was looking at Ryan with the mic, I said, I think that's set for my height, so I won't have to move it when I come. Of course, all of you know me, but for the record, Marla Itskin, I'm the Director of Marketing for the Cid. And I'm here to report today on what we've been doing lately and what we, a little bit of a sneak peek of what we're going to be doing going forward. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Halloween. It was, it was fun in the planning and unfortunately, we had a little bit of a weather ghoulish fail in some execution. But what we were able to accomplish was extraordinary. And the excitement that it generated from not only the business community, but from the community at large was tremendous. So we had a lot of things on the table. We were planning a trick-or-treat downtown, which is very traditional for us. We also wanted to offer an opportunity for the businesses outside of the Cid to participate in that downtown trick-or-treat. And the idea that we came up with was having a Halloween market. Celebrate the last weekend of the Main Street closure by especially by inviting our businesses from outside of downtown to participate. And we said, if room allows, we're also going to let our downtown merchants participate as well. But have a marketplace where our merchants could show off their wares. Some of our restaurants and bakeries and other food service could, could do some treats. And that was our plan for the market. We were also going to have kind of a photo station and we were going to have, I had a great music soundtrack of 50 Halloween tracks that I put together. But unfortunately, the weather went a little south on us, but we were able to save trick-or-treat and Halloween. The original time slot was from four to six. We kept looking at the weather forecast and saying, you know what? If you just kind of open this up a little bit and say, you know what? You guys were already, our, our merchants were ready to receive people. We said, just go, you know, anytime in the afternoon, dance between the raindrops and go downtown. We had over 30 merchants participate in the trick-or-treat. A lot of the ones who were going to participate in the holiday market also kind of revamped. And somebody like Taste Buddy, who's in a different area, was still able to offer trick-or-treating. And we just constantly spun the promotion, the social media to let everybody know what was happening. The other big event we had planned was a touch or a touch of truck and treat, which we set up for Short Hill Station, another way of making things Melbourne-wide and throughout our five district Cid. We had a great meeting with DPW and police and fire and everybody was on board. That is something that we are going to move because we think it's a great event and we're very excited about it. But unfortunately, that also got rained out. Virtual Halloween costume contest, don't get rained out. So that went according to plan. We offered up $50 gift cards for our winners and we have nine winners. They've all been notified and I'm getting the information back on where they would like their gift card from. We said they could do it from anywhere within the special improvement district. And we saw great participation in social media and frankly, some great costumes. I was very impressed, everything from the homemade to, to putting together big family groups. It was, it was nice and very engaging and gave us a lot of traction. So that was Halloween. I think I covered all those events. Oh, and we also closed out the music schedule by having Big Romance as our last for the season for live music, which of course, as you know, we had downtown, but we also tapped other places in the special improvement district as well. And we went from having, the, the idea just kept growing. It was, oh, let's have music once or twice downtown. And it ended up expanding and being a 60, a 60 scheduled event extravaganza. Everything from having some of the kids, from Natalie's to, to regular bands. And then saying, hey, why don't we try some jazz music on a Sunday brunch? So very well received, something I'm sure we're going to think of doing again as we go forward. It was, it was something that brings a lot of life to downtown. Having events in general that people could come, attend, participate in, bring family, bring friends. That is the kind of foot traffic and activity that is vital for all of our businesses. And that's something we want to support. So as we look forward to what we're going to be doing next, we have the whole winter season ahead of us. So the original mindset of what can we do for small business Saturday was the, the kickstart for a lot of our thinking. And we, we sat in our groups and we said, you know what? This is also bigger than one day for sure. And we are thinking of it more as a small business season, a shop local season that starts right here now in the beginning, middle of November and goes all the way through the holiday season. So what we would like to do is look at some of the, you know, we, we try to pivot. And we, there were things we weren't able to do for Halloween. Money that we didn't use or candy we bought. And how can we pivot and use this now going forward? So this is something that we have been, I would love to come to you with this cohesive plan. We had one, but we are pivoting and we are looking on what can we add? What can we do a little differently to make this next season great? So I want to sit with our events committee and share some of the ideas that we were putting out there. For example, the Halloween candy that we purchased that we didn't get to hand out. Wouldn't it be great if we had some little holiday elves running around town and sharing some packages of, of holiday candy? How can we leverage the fact we didn't do the touch of truck? Is there something we can do to bring that into winter? You know, we're a hardy bunch. We know how to put on hats, gloves and a, and a scarf. And maybe this is some, an event we want to bring in. Can we bring more music to downtown? Can we parolers? Can we have the DJ that we plan to have at the touch of truck? Maybe come in and give some of that atmosphere to our town and bring in that foot traffic. Thinking really hard about how do we use events, physical events that we could attend as we are coming out of COVID, of course safely. But how do we kind of bring that, the vast, you know, just the vibrancy back to the community where we're not all hunkered down? the vibrancy back to the community where we're not all hunkered down in our own, in our own spaces? So this would involve an extensive social media campaign featuring our merchants. We have a banner that we want to hang across Milburn Avenue. That is something that we do have that I can show you. Um, we are going to work on, that was, that was a hint, Jess, I think. Uh, so we have that designed. This, yeah, this, just to show you, like, get it off the screen quick, but we have a social media campaign in the works to feature our merchants from all over the special improvement district, just keeping reminding everybody the shop local and how important that is. So that is kind of what that, you know, little statement was, but we're also going to do A-frame signs that we're going to put in town. And the, the, just take the one look and feel for that banner and put it um throughout the community. I think we might have lost our live feed. Okay, screen just start. I could keep going. So that is the plan. I, we've been, I've been working with the marketing committee on fine tuning the look and feel for that campaign, which is why that first screen, while you could say, hey, we're busy, we have a lot we want to say, we're still kind of tuning the look and feel for that. Um, and the A-frame signs, again, we want to maybe take some of this gift card money that we allocated also for winter and say, how do we really extend this program and make it a motivating thing for all of the people who come downtown to our different shopping areas and get them involved in a program? So throwing out the idea of doing another gift card contest, but something a little bigger and broader than we had before. So these are all things that are kind of still in their early stages. Need some time with the events committee and, and finish up with the marketing committee so we can really launch this cohesive plan.
Marla, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
When, when do you anticipate the starting this part, this uh social media blitz?
ASAP. Um, really this week, coming up to really kick it off. Uh, and to kick it off hard. So this is something where I won't say every day, we have other thing, we're actually going to hit social media every day. But that this be a real focus for us on a daily basis. Uh, we have so many merchants that we could be showing off. And we're going to take the time to do that between now and the holidays.
And Steve, I have a question related to this, which we, we talked about off, more offline. Is there any way to help, you know, the, the handful of merchants that are not in the Sid that we've discussed? You know, that have suffered, you know, that are, you know, uh, that are near Wyoming, you know, and that, you know, the car. Anthony Lawrence Jewelers. I mean, there are a lot of, there's a handful of businesses that took it on the nose that are still recovering. And um, I'm just wondering, I'm just, and again, these are, you know, this, these are not members of the Sid. And, and um, I know this is something that, that was one of my goals, is if there's a way to help, help them. Um, you know, if that's possible.
So there's some difficulty in that, right? And that we, we can't spend Sid resources and money on businesses that are not within the Sid. Um, that would not be appropriate um or legal. Um, and so we just need to be very careful about how we do that. Now, there's, there's nothing saying that, you know, we couldn't uh perhaps invite them to a mixer. Um, so for instance, we're doing the Wyoming mixer in, in December. Perfect time for them to come, spend some time, meet, meet the other folks that are there, understand the program. Um, I think that's a, a pretty good, safe use of our resources. In terms of marketing them uh or, or participate, having them participate in events, that I think would not be appropriate. Uh, but certainly from a networking side of it and an interpersonal side of it.
Steve, can we just recap for Richard and just, because I'm trying to think when on, because it may have been in between meetings. The connections that were made through the Mudball and the assistance for the businesses outside the Sid?
Correct, so um.
Aware of that.
So we're anticipating about thirteen thousand dollars um that will be allocated to the businesses outside the Sid boundary. That's through the Mudball. Uh, Mudball provided about twenty thousand to us. Um, and they have about thirteen thousand that they're going to be providing to individual businesses in the area that you're talking about. So um, there's certainly an ability to work with those businesses. We just need to be very conscious of how we're doing that so that we don't violate um the, the rules and requirements of the Sid. But um, certainly, you know, with the Wyoming event coming up, um, I'd be happy to invite those folks. In fact, I think it's a great way to integrate them and, and allow them to spread the word about what we're doing and potentially gain their interest in participating in the future.
So, so if we did want to, if we did want to, if, you know, we did want to help them, it really would have to be done by ordinance. In other words, through the township.
That, that would be correct.
That, that's such, so, so that would have to be changed.
Yeah, no, no money from our budget can be spent on anything outside of the Sid. And that includes my time, Marla's time.
Just mentioning, there's other businesses in other area, I mean, I, I feel very glad having been a part of that, that we all, the larger community found a way to work together to help those businesses affected by Ida. I would just say there's businesses in other places too, the businesses on that part of Willow Street, the dermatology office, the car wash. Aaron's Faces, I, there's. Yeah, I mean, I think it's just, there's little pockets of businesses in a whole bunch of places. I don't know. To me, it, it sounds like a little bit of a can of worms while a lot of other things are still pending. I say, I think we all care a lot about all the businesses, but it makes sense, Steve, from what you're saying is that we have to stay focused on. But I'm glad we were able to help make connections, especially for those businesses. I mean, I happen to live right over there that were hit by Ida and I know they even leveraged our grant process. We were able to success transfer the learning over of how to have a similar assessment of grants.
Yeah, and don't forget, it's not just that area as well. Um, Main Street beyond uh church is not within the boundary. Um, and so there's.
There are a lot of different.
Yeah, so we actually received an application from Casa Colombo, which is an Italian-American uh philanthrop uh organization. We couldn't help them. So what we did was um, I forwarded their application directly to Wendy, who's the organizer of the Mudball. And now she's including them in her funding package. So it has been a really good integration of trying to assist the businesses that we can't legally help. Um, but to your point, I think in terms of engaging them and getting them to understand what we're doing as a community. Um, that's certainly something that we can do within the, the regulations of the Sid.
And certainly all of the small business shop small messaging that Marla is describing, I mean, I think the whole idea is shop in your local area. And so I think that messaging, there's a spillover effect. You know, it's like shop at your Milburn Short Hills businesses.
Yes, everyone will gain. Everyone will gain the benefit of that, including all the, the home-based businesses. I mean, it, if, if the tide rises, you know, for, it'll rise for everyone. And let it be for all the small businesses. You know, I'm, I'm, we're thrilled if it benefits businesses outside the Sid, why not? Um, but of course, as Steve was saying, we're here primarily, of course, for our, our merchants. But our messaging is strong and applies to these other businesses.
Shop local.
Shop local. Ah, yes, so there, so there is, I did a tap dance, waiting for my banner.
That was, that's what I was looking. I didn't see it.
So you may not be able to tell, but this banner, banner is thirty feet long and goes across uh, goes across Milburn Avenue, across from Taylor Park entrance. So that's just one example of what we were doing. So a little sneak peek while we work out uh some of the finer points between marketing and events. And have a nice, robust, multifaceted marketing effort to help everybody this holiday season.
Marla, do we? Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, why, why do we only make one?
That's what I was going to ask, is like by the middle, by the middle school.
Oh, that's, that's also more of a tactical thing because Winter Walk has a lot of this real estate and a matter of fact, very kindly, they said, uh, we'll give you this one. Because they, they already had, they, they.
They already reserved those spots.
Yeah, they've reserved all the spots for the holiday season for, for Winter Walk. And we're going to take this one. Yes, we, we appropriated, we appropriated this spot. Um, but that's why we're also going to do A-frames and that's why, of course, we're going to have our social media blast. But yeah, they, they have some of the prime banner locations already, already uh take that. Of course, we need the closure for Halloween.
It's a shame because it looks really good.
Yeah, and Winter Walk is.
Um, I'm working on getting estimates, looking at what, I was looking at the one the Mudball got, but it was also part of a package. There might have been a partial donation. So I don't want to throw out a number right now and, and be off. Um, because I was kind of surprised by, you know, all right, so what, two fifty? I, I would say between one fifty and two fifty for a banner of this length and size.
So is it possible maybe to get one somehow on Mars Turnpike? Although. I don't know where you put it, but on A-frame maybe or something, but one of those kind of weird sign, oh, no.
That's an idea though, to somehow have a large banner somewhere on Mars Turnpike. I mean, it's a gateway to town from that direction.
Well, there's, there's certainly other sizing and.
I don't know if we're allowed to, that, that's, yeah.
No idea.
It's not, it's not New Jersey Transit.
Yeah, yeah, that's New Jersey Transit, but we could ask New Jersey Transit. Maybe.
Or, or perhaps by the train station?
Maybe the train station. I think that's a good spot.
Train stations?
Yeah, both train stations because of commuters coming, you know.
That's a nice idea.
At the very least, A-frames there, I think, because like, like if you think about it, the strawberry festivals always advertise at the train station.
Yeah, so, sorry. So these are, are grommeted, right? So you can pretty much use a zip tie to hold them up if necessary. This one is uh three feet high by three, thirty feet long, um, but we can get smaller sizes as well. So um, if you guys want, uh, we can certainly, you know, get some estimates and then we'll make the decision to proceed. But um, there's plenty of locations in town where if you at least have a fence post, you can put this up. Um, so, you know, we were working with Tracy and Jomana today um on the design. If you guys are comfortable with that design, you don't need to say now, we can certainly make that decision later tonight, tomorrow. Um, we can then proceed with ordering, printing, and we could probably have them here in, in the next couple of days.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to see what locations we could use, even, I don't know if it would be appropriate, but to have them like, if, I don't know, for example, my store has a, like a porch and I, I I would be happy if you, for you guys to hang something that advertises shop local or any other places. I think there could be quite a few places where we could put that. It looks really good.
That's a great idea, like smaller versions to put in store windows and things.
Yeah, we could do a, um, so like we have one that we use uh for our events. It's uh four by six.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, that's probably a pretty decent size if we were to do it on the front of somebody's property or do it in front of a municipal parking lot, um, you know, thirty feet is a lot.
I mean, eight and a half by eleven and just hand them out to all the businesses too.
Or the eleven by seventeen posters, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we had also talked about, you know, having a QR code like on these posters and then having a destination on the website. Once we figure out the events, like here's where you go to find out the specials and find out the events. So. Yeah, I mean, posters at businesses are certainly.
And that's what we typically do for events, you know, we, we put those posters together. Yeah, so, so as Marla said, you know, and I don't want to speak for her, but I will. Uh, so, you know, we've been trying to move at a pretty breakneck pace with this. Um, and so you know, this banner is the start of the branding process. Um, certainly we can do smaller banners at strategic locations. I think that's a, a absolutely good idea. Um, the A-frames, uh, I think will be very helpful. It just gives us another uh four uh in town with the QR code that we talked about. That of course means updating the website so that the QR code directs you somewhere. Marla was working on that today as well. Um, and then in terms of, you know, postcards or posters, once we have something set up, um, you know, probably take that A-frame concept and then turn that into a poster. Um, all of that can be done fairly quickly. It's really a matter of getting the branding uh to the point where everybody's on, in agreement, and then you can start manipulating into different sizes.
Did you say when the big one is going to go up across Milburn, Milburn Avenue?
Marketing committee can tell me that they like it. If they like it.
There's already games to go.
Then I will, uh, I will instruct Marla, Marla. Proceed and, and we'll order them and uh we'll at least get that one up. And then we'll get some estimates on, uh, you know, maybe getting another couple.
Yeah, some holidays are early this year, so like you have Thanksgiving and they're going to start right away.
This would be pretty quick. I, I would say that if we ordered this, you know, tomorrow, uh, we could probably get it up in a week or so.
ASAP, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's really up to the vendor, right? If they can get it.
One more question. So the, the Winter Walk and the, I would assume there's some synergies that if we work together with them to rebrand. I, I don't know all the background on who controls the, the, the Winter Walk. It's a chamber. And what the promise, the, the process to reserve those spots, I mean, we should really kind of look at that.
Yeah, so I reached out to um, to my, my counterpart at the Chamber and, and said, listen, you know, I want to make sure that we're being good neighbors. This is what we're planning on doing. Um, I wanted to make sure that they weren't putting out banners and posters in the same places we're intending to. And they said, yeah, we actually have some banners ordered and they're going here and here. So great, that's fine. Can we just take one spot over Milburn Avenue? Sure, compromise, we have a great working relationship. That was that. Um, I think, you know, next year, when we have certainly more foresight, certainly when I, when I came on in May, I wasn't thinking about Christmas. I was thinking about getting the budget correct. Um, but um, I think, you know, going into that, we'll have a much better idea of what they're planning on doing for this. Um, you know, we talked about also and, and Marla, I know wants to schedule a, a event committee meeting fairly soon, like this week. Um, because, you know, we've been talking about certain things like winter windows. You know, do we want to do that program this year? Uh, do we have the budget to do that if we're doing other events? And so there needs to be some decisions made fairly quickly. As I said to Marla today, and we were kind of pulling our hair out uh with some things, and I said, you know, we're rushed, we have a lot to do in a really short period of time. But my concern is not that we don't have ideas. Um, then I'd be really nervous. I think we have plenty of ideas um to, to circulate. It's just a matter of getting them executed. So um, you know, uh, at this point, I think we'll do some really good stuff. It's just really moving quickly.
Just one, one last thing related to Winter Walk. I think we had done a little of this last year. I mean, I totally agree. There's a lot of great ideas, but it's a question of what are going to be the most impactful? And just also having this overarching theme. I know there's this initial theme and then there's also a nice icon that was developed for small business season. And I think that whole small business season theme, a lot could fit under that. In terms of Winter Walk, it would be good for us to coordinate with the Chamber. We had done a little bit of this last year, like promoting if people are coming to Winter Walk, here's your, your list of places to go eat before or after you go to Winter Walk. Or trying to get people from Winter Walk to come into town and shop and just finding some ways that there could be cross-promotion um in that way, I'm hoping you can have.
Agreed, yeah. Uh, they opened November twenty first, um, and they go for almost, I guess, what, over a month and a half, um, into January, I think, late January. So certainly opportunities there to do cross-promotion. I don't know what their rollout's going to be. Um, but certainly if they can assist us like we assist them, um, that would be terrific. Um, you know, I think the lesson learned here, and, and I think any Sid director can tell you this. Uh, this is a miserable part of the year for this job, uh, between Halloween, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Um, and so there's only so many hours in the day and there's only so much money in the budget. Um, I think the, the lesson learned for me this year is that um, there's an incredible demand in this community for events between Halloween, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Um, you know, we probably started a little late in the planning process and I think that's obviously because, you know, I, I was only on the job a few months and we had other things that we needed to do. Um, but I, I think next year, it, it just better long-term planning about saying, you know, maybe Christmas needs to start in the summertime. Um, and so, you know, good lesson for me to learn, um, but certainly the obstacles have been um, nonexistent. The town has been terrific. DPW has been so helpful with anything we needed to do. Chamber has been a great partner in, in working with us. Um, so I, I think just next year, it's more about um establishing a, a longer term vision for some of these events because it is a very truncated part of the year.
And hopefully no hurricane Ida.
Yeah, I was going to say, you, you've been consumed.
That, that's, that's taken up a little bit of my time.
Yeah, you've been consumed the whole of September and a good part of October by that as well, so.
Uh, realistically, I, I did lose an incredible amount of time because of the Ida program.
Exactly.
Um, but, you know, it's just the reality, you know, things needed to get done. We'll get it all done. Um, it'll be a little bit harder than I would like, but you know, Marla and I are ready to do it. It's, it's just, uh, this is a challenging part of the year for, for any town and any executive director.
Steve, any, any collaboration with, with the Paper Mill in terms of any promotion or signage or?
We haven't come up with anything yet. I'm happy to speak to them and see, you know, if they have any support for it.
Does work closely with them. I think that, 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 uh, as Paper Mill comes back, I think it's a major hub. And I think our messaging of shop local, you know, it's uh, you know, could be very collaborative with uh, with Paper Mill. And I'd be happy to set up a meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I speak to Mike all the time, um, so I appreciate that. But I mean, the, they're actually going to work with us quite a bit on wayfinding in twenty twenty-two. Uh, with some signage, really focused on cultural and open space and we'll get to that. But um, I think to Tracy's point, you know, about integrating Winter Walk into supporting businesses. Thank goodness Paper Mill is open and up and running and they're going to have people coming through there. A good place to have cross-promotion as well.
Signage, if possible.
Yeah, agreed. We could do that, yeah.
Yeah, they have signs.
Yeah.
So are we doing winter windows?
Well, yeah.
I mean, it's not here, so I just.
Yeah, that's, that's for us to really meet about. Um, when we were just brainstorming, we said, what kind of, what do we think is going to be the most motivated? is going to be the most motivating and, uh, really drive foot traffic and everything else? And some of the ideas that we were coming up with on the table, we said, you know, maybe we reallocate from the windows and do that. But that's for us to really sit down and discuss.
Again, this is for the meeting for you guys to have. Um, I, I do think there's a manpower question in terms of, you know, what we're trying to do here. Um, I, I do think winter windows needs to be reassessed in terms of this year. Uh, if we're looking to make a really big splash, um, I think there's better options. Um, winter windows is very, very labor intensive if we're going to do it the right way and really expand it. Um, that's not to say it's not possible. Um, it's just something that I think that committee needs to sit down and really make a serious decision about.
One little idea on that, yeah, for winter windows is if you do hand out some flyer around Shop Local, you could also then include some consistent ribbons or some, some other things that then all the shop owners would be given something. So there's still a consistent sort of look and feel. Um, it, it might be nice because you have the Shop Local and then you have some other, something else that we could put up.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Actually, annual meeting. All right. So, um, stood them better than your meeting last night, Richard.
Well, well, we'll see.
Wow, he's got a lot of faith in me.
I have faith.
No, we're still three hours short. Uh, so just a, a quick update on the board slate. Um, so as we know, Nadej has decided to move on, uh, from the board. So that opens up a seat for a property owner. Uh, we have been distributing information, trying to get volunteers to sign up. Um, as of this point, we've had nobody, um, that's a serious taker. Um, I do, uh, you know, we're going to continue doing what we're doing on our end. The township is certainly putting out information about a call for volunteers. Um, but as a board, if there are folks that you know that are property owners of commercial business, uh, commercial properties within the boundaries of the Sid, please have them, uh, at least call me to talk about the, the process. Um, this seat does not need to be filled, uh, by January one, uh, it can remain vacant. So there's no rush to do it. Uh, we got to certainly make sure that we get the right person in the right position. Um, but uh, now is a good time of the year to try to approach people. So, um, as board members, that is a really critical role that you can serve. And I would appreciate any assistance that I can have. Simple as you need to be a property owner of a commercial assessed property within the Sid. If someone has a question, certainly they can call me and I can tell them whether they, the property that they own is, uh, qualifies them to serve on the board.
Can I ask a, a bylaws question then on that? It, because it does say the board shall be comprised of seven voting members, et cetera. Should there be any flexibility in, in here to address potential vacancies and the ability to validly move forward and vote on items and operate if you are down a person temporarily?
Uh, so, um, I, I don't think it needs to, uh, change. It's, I think it's a very good question. Uh, the shall in, in that paragraph is, is limiting. So there shall be seven members and no more, no less. Uh, it also means that there shall be a vacancy when there's not somebody. So, uh, it prevents, uh, the a pocket, you know, a reduction in the total size of the board, uh, but the shall would not be prohibitive in the sense that if you had a vacancy, the board couldn't function or the board didn't exist as an entity. Um, so a gr- great, good question, but I don't see it as a, a conflict. Um, if you have to operate with a vacancy, uh, unfortunately you're, you're going to have to operate, uh, and it happens. It's a very regular occurrence in, in the corporate governance.
And we do have, I'm sorry, Steve, and we do have a quorum that we have to meet. So whether we have seven members or six, we still have to have the same amount of people to conduct business.
Great. That's a, that's a, that's a quorum. Is that authorizing acknowledgement that you are going to have a board be with less than its full membership for time to time? And that when that evening floor, if you will, is going to be the quorum.
Got it. Thanks.
Any question? A quorum is four voting members.
Four.
You have seven voting members. You need fifty percent plus. So four voting members. So even if you had six, uh, people, you'd still have two over the quorum. Uh, assuming everyone's present. Uh, any questions before I get into the annual report? And I promise you, I will keep this brief. Um, I don't know if you can see. Okay, great. So, um, why are we doing this? So every year, according to our bylaws, uh, we are required to publish an annual report. That annual report is also provided to the clerk. Um, and she puts it into, uh, the record with everybody else that provides a report. Uh, so this has actually already been submitted. I've run this past the governance committee. Uh, we've had a number of discussions on it. Um, I think this is our, our final version and I, I'm very proud of what we're putting together and putting out. Each of you has a bound copy. Um, I'll happily autograph them for you for posterity. Um, but I think all of you should be extremely proud of the work that you've done as well. Um, you don't need me to tell you that because you founded this thing, but, uh, you're an incredible board. You're my eleventh or twelfth Sid board. Um, and by far, I think the most aggressive and interested and engaged, and it's a pleasure working with you. Um, and so we're going to go through some of the general items that exist with the assumption that the person reading this doesn't have me walking them through it. I will not spend too much time on those details, but I do want to focus certainly on the accomplishments. So Jesse, um, and, and funny enough, we moved so quickly, uh, in this or, this office. I printed this on Monday and some of the stuff's already out of date. Um, but that's a good thing. Uh, you know, we're, we're moving very, very quickly. So, um, we did include a message from our chairman. Um, he thinks things are great. Everything's going well. He's very happy. That's that. Um, the next slide is a, a focus on the district. As you know, um, we are unique eh, to most Sids in that we have five districts and those districts are non-contiguous. Um, that pretend, that presents opportunities and challenges. Um, but I think what's been really interesting is, is seeing how the different businesses operate, um, how they identify themselves. Uh, this year we went through a bit of a rebrand, branding process with Jomana and, and Tracy. Uh, we looked at the neighborhoods and we came up with new names, Wyoming Business Center, um, and Morris Turnpike at Short Hills. Uh, those were really demand responsive to the businesses and how they want to promote themselves and brand themselves. Um, so very happy with where we are in terms of the boundaries, the dis- the district, um, and how we're marketing it. Move to the next slide, Jesse. Organizational overview. Um, as you guys know, you were formed by ordinance in August of twenty twenty. We are now a five oh one C three designated not-for-profit. Probably the most important thing that happened to this organization other than Hurricane Ida. Um, and our, so explores overall goals. I, I wanted to spend a little time on this because I do think it's important. Because this really guides how Marla and I do our work every day. Um, we want to strengthen existing businesses and attract new ones by being a trusted and accessible resource. And I think that's the key. Um, we are a resource that people can contact easily, efficiently and accurately. Um, we are here for the businesses. We are available for the businesses and we're here forty hours a week plus. Um, we advance unique planning and placemaking projects and you've seen some of those, the parking study, the Morris Turnpike work. The signage, we have seventy new banners all throughout town, color-coded per district. And then the rest of our signage, uh, that we're working on with the town will also match those colors, those branding. Um, the banner going across Milburn Avenue is downtown blue. It's in the font. It's all consistent. Um, and then supporting those five commercial districts through various services, marketing events, business advocacy. And, uh, this presentation will follow those four critical strategies of marketing, branding, placemaking, planning and events, bylaws and governance, and then business advocacy. Uh, go to the next slide, Jesse. Very brief overview on the board composition. You guys should probably know this by now. Um, you were created by the Township Committee. Um, in terms of overall policy, that is your job as the Sid Board of Trustees. I present you with ideas. You give me feedback and we develop an overall goal and mission for the organization. And then day-to-day operations are the responsibility of me as the Executive Director and Marla as the Director of Marketing. Uh, but what this always comes down to and the final responsibility is our work for the businesses and property owners of the district, as well as the taxpayers who provide a portion of the budget, including my salary. And we are very cognizant that, uh, the TC and our board, you certainly give us direction, but in the end, if we are not responsive to the needs of the businesses and property owners, then we have failed in our mission. Uh, and so also of course, uh, again, if you need me to autograph it for posterity, there's your list. Uh, you guys are there forever. You are the Board of Trustees for twenty twenty-one. And we thank you all for your service. Um, in terms of an operating budget, um, a very, very brief, but this is your twenty twenty-one operating budget. So this is what I work off every day. Um, right now you have a two hundred and four thousand dollar, uh, assessment, quasi-assessment provided by the township, not the property owners yet. That's next year. Uh, you carried over about twelve thousand dollars in money from the year prior and that resulted in a budget of about two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Um, so this year we've done very well. One of my primary goals when I came on board, uh, was to start, uh, squirreling away money. Uh, knowing that towards the end of the year, we may have, uh, a need for extra money. Talked about the events coming up in the next six weeks. Those will be expensive. Uh, we'll need to take care of that. Uh, we certainly also have a period where we have no income, uh, between January and April. There's no tax revenue coming in uh, due to the assessment timing. And so we need to make sure that we have money in the budget as a holdover. Uh, so this year we estimate, as, as Stephen mentioned earlier, about ten thousand dollars that will carry over. It'll be somewhere in that neighborhood, uh, depending on expenses. Uh, overall, uh, I think you guys put together a really solid budget, uh, prior to my arrival. And, uh, you know, staffing, we're a little bit over fifty-two hundred dollars. Um, that's because I, I have a higher salary than my predecessor. Um, marketing and social media, we had a couple of unexpected expenses, nothing dramatic about twenty-five hundred dollars. And then general operating, um, we were a little low on legal auditing, accounting. Um, but those will all be rectified in the twenty twenty-two budget. Um, and again, I'm having this presentation now because we're going to be presenting and voting on the twenty twenty-two budget, uh, momentarily. And I want you to understand how we go through this process. In terms of programs, um, I think we really hit it out of the park here. The budget, uh, actually came in under budget in terms of events, um, physical placemaking, things like that. Um, and the visual improvements and programs, we were able to launch the Explore Refresh Program, uh, which awarded almost ten thousand dollars to small businesses to for storefront improvements. Uh, and we ended the year with a surplus and that includes, uh, adding a board training that you originally did not have, uh, as well as the curb efficiency study, uh, which you did not have. So we added programs, we added salary and we still came in with a surplus. Um, so I think overall, uh, we've managed this really, really well and we're going to have a very healthy picture for next year financially. And I, I would be remiss not to thank Stephen, uh, for all the work he does. He is a exceptional treasurer and, uh, does a great job of, of working with me to, to make sure that everything is as it needs to be. So moving to the next slide, Jesse, um, year in review. This was the first year of full operations for the Sid. Um, in terms of our four categories, uh, we're concluded expanding our social media efforts across the board. Uh, we launched a LinkedIn and YouTube channel. Um, we've created a new website. Tracy, incredible work on that. Um, we started the weekend warm-up email blast series, which has some really good readership. We launched the Meet the Merchants, uh, commercial series, which as of now has seventeen commercials up on our YouTube page. Um, we performed the A-frame sign donation program, gave ten signs, uh, to businesses throughout the district, put up four of our own in downtown as well as Upper Milburn Avenue, uh, to try to generate foot traffic and create a little bit more branding consistency. Um, and we've also installed, uh, now it's seventy, uh, street pole banners, uh, and the banners on Morris Turnpike. Uh, so that replaced all the older ones the DMDA had, had put up. Uh, we did a major capital project on Morris Turnpike, as I mentioned. So overall, I think the marketing, branding, placemaking was a huge success and, and we're looking forward to, uh, we, we've allocated quite a bit of money to that next year because I think this is really important for this district. Uh, in terms of planning and events, um, we did the fame event for Mother's Day. Uh, the rain hit that one, just like it hit our, our Halloween. Uh, but it was a nice event, a really good way to start off my tenure here. Um, we've done business mixers that I mentioned in every district now. Except Wyoming, which will be next month and in the downtown, but the mixers have been a really big success. We've gotten really nice turnout there. Um, Main Street closure was a hit of hits. Um, I can't believe how successful that was. The summer music series, the Games on Main program, which washed away with Hurricane Ida, but we'll buy some more next year. Um, musicians for summer sales, um, and then the fall brunch series, which we did, um, uh, after Labor Day, which is a really nice, uh, kind of switch from the rock bands to some of the song and stuff. So, uh, really looking forward to, to expanding that next year. Uh, bylaws and governance, you hired a full-time executive director. Good idea. Um, and I, I think you made the right choice. But, uh, obviously that's a huge part of Sid management. Um, and I think you guys made the right decision to look full-time. Um, a lot of towns don't do that, but this, this town certainly needs, uh, a forty-plus hour a week staff. Uh, there, there's a lot of demands here. Um, designated as a five oh one C three, could not have performed the Hurricane Ida work that we did without having the C three. Um, and so that is, as I mentioned, probably the most important thing that happened this year. Um, really, really happy that that was the, uh, the resolution. Uh, we created a bylaw, bylaws and governance committee. We streamlined the budget process. We hired an attorney, Mr. Cooper, um, to deal with some of the, the legal issues that we face. Uh, overall, I think, you know, really running this operation professionally, uh, which is what you as a board deserve. Um, and then finally the business advocacy, uh, we did the Explore Refresh Program, as I mentioned. Uh, we did the commercial vacancy study, at least the first iteration that will continue to happen every six months. Um, and, and I've been, uh, really happy to participate in a lot of town committees. CETA, the Parking Ad hoc, the Two Way, uh, Traffic Committee, um, the Taylor Park Gateway Committee. And, and I worked with Jesse on a couple of those. And I think it's really, really important that the town embraced the Sid as an economic development driver. Um, and that when they're doing master planning and traffic planning, they take our considerations, uh, to heart. Uh, because we represent the businesses that are being affected by some of these plans. Couple pictures for you. Um, a lot of our social media signage. Uh, I looked today, we're up to almost fifteen hundred followers on, on Instagram. That number keeps going up and up and up. So, um, I love that we're continuing to drive up there. Uh, website has been great, super functional, um, and we're going to continue to integrate that into our events. Next slide, Jesse. Placemaking, um, has gone well. Um, as you know, the banners, the closure area. I like my excitement is coming signs. I put those on businesses when they're under construction. Um, so always a good day when I can put one of those up because it means a vacant storefront's being occupied. Um, you go to the next slide, Jesse. And again, the events, you know, a ton of diverse events all throughout the town, as you see here. Um, Wyoming will have its event coming up and then we, we really have covered, um, every part of the district multiple times. Um, it's been, uh, really a pleasure getting to know these merchants and engage them in a variety of different ways. Ida, um, I don't need to spend too much time talking about this, uh, but again, uh, Tracy was, uh, really incredible when it came to putting together the donation page, which has raised two hundred thousand dollars. We couldn't have done it without her. When, when, uh, I was out in the street and, and Marla was typing out email blasts and getting social media out there. She took a day and, and just went crazy with putting together this wonderful donation page. So, uh, we're, we're indebted to her for that work. Um, and then Richard as well, you know, going to bat for us on the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the town. As I mentioned before, you know, represents about fifty percent of our, of our budget and we just wouldn't be able to do what we've done without that. So incredible team effort from you guys, um, and, and thank you for that. Uh, year-end projects, we talked about small business season. We're going to continue to roll that out at rapid pace. Um, the merchant mixer that I mentioned in Wyoming, um, we need to take it some action tonight, uh, finalizing our twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget. Um, and then dealing with the board membership, as I mentioned, filling, uh, a vacant seat. Um, I'm working right now with the tax assessor to make sure that our assessment role is correct. Um, it's not exciting. It's even more boring than bylaws, but you actually have to go and look at all the block and lots and make sure that the right ones are in there. Um, and so we're, we're working with the, the clerk, um, and the, uh, the tax assessor on all of that. Um, and then I want to think about, you know, probably not in the December period, it may be in January, February, um, as we get to a bit of a debtor period of the year, um, really trying to integrate our work with local property owners, uh, creating some type of roundtable for those who have significant properties or influence, uh, meeting with local real estate brokers, helping them understand what we do because they're our great ambassador, right? They're the first point of contact for a new business considering coming here. If they can articulate what Explore is about and why Milburn is a healthy place to do business, that's a great gateway for getting us involved and bringing in new businesses. Um, I want to focus on some speaker series as well as working with, um, other Sids in the region. I, I mentioned to Jackie. I had my second meeting with my counterpart in Cranford, uh, yesterday, and we are working on putting together a group of other smaller Sids, um, in Southern Essex and Union, um, to try to work on some of the issues that we all face. Um, and think of some collaborative ideas and just share concepts on events and marketing. Um, there's a lot of folks in our kind of budgetary and population world and, uh, we, we need to work together. Um, we've got a bunch of them even nearby in Springfield and Maplewood. So I'm excited about doing that, um, and moving forward. Very briefly, potential efforts, uh, for next year, um, adding additional A-frame signs, uh, directional signage that I mentioned before. We're going to work with Paper Mill and some other groups, um, on, on trying to do some really creative stuff. Uh, Tracy gave me some good ideas yesterday as well, um, in terms of directional signage and, and other things that we can do in, in downtown. Um, intersection art, murals, pedestrian canopies. We talked about that in our parking study, how we can create better pedestrian experiences, uh, tree pits, um, seating, lighting, et cetera. All of those things can be, can be drawn out of our, uh, budget for next year. Uh, we're looking to do a night market, restaurant week, um, interactive games for kids at the closure. I was driving past Genius Gems. I don't know if you guys have ever gone by. Uh, they had like a line of kids sitting outside waiting to get in. They've got this teacher on a headset and, and they're all putting up these big designs, gems of Legos and things. gems of Legos and things. And I'm like, we need to do this in our closure area. So I want to start integrating things like that, you know. It's not just about entertainment. It can be about education as well. Events for Father's Day and Mother's Day, integrating the arts as well. Bylaws, governance, we have to finish our audit next year. That's important. But the most important thing we can do is acceptance into the New Jersey Main Street program. We were rejected this year because we did not have a 501(c)(3. That is a prerequisite to get into the program. Now we do, so hopefully that program's going to roll out in January, and then we'll get our application up and running. But that will open a lot of doors for us. Next week, I'll actually be attending the New Jersey League of Municipalities Conference as well. Downtown New Jersey will have a couple of seminars going on. A lot of my counterparts throughout the state will be there, and I think it'll be a good opportunity for us to continue to work with the state and with the DCA most especially. And then in terms of business advocacy, you know, access to capital and jobs, those are the two biggest things. Putting money on the street is really important. These micro grants are really, really important. I want to continue evaluating that and proceed. I think the Explore Refresh Program was great. We should continue themes like that. And then, you know, trying to help people get employees. Number one complaint that I face, I just, nobody can find anybody to work. That may change, we don't know, but we're going to continue to try to be creative about getting the word out, and that's a huge part of our weekend warm-up email. We didn't do job postings in the beginning, and then they just kept flooding in, and that's all that I see on social media now. And so we're going to really try to support the businesses in that respect. And then finally, just challenges and opportunities. I'm not going to belabor this, but you know, commercial vacancies, we certainly need to address that. We're at about 10% right now town-wide. That number's probably increased due to Ida, and so it's a little bit of a skewed number. I think Upper Milburn Avenue will see a decrease in vacancies once the development is built across the street in Springfield. We do need to recover from Ida, but I think we're going to still see a fairly large number. I would not be surprised if we were probably around 14%, 15% when I do the next assessment. But again, that's kind of an artificial number caused by a development in process and a storm. Retail trends, we need to continue to promote businesses being experiential and innovative. Typical brick-and-mortar retail is a challenge, and you know, there's a lot of marketing and support that we can provide. I mentioned employees. Cost of doing business, again, one of the most expensive, if not the most expensive state in the nation to do business. Putting cash on the street with these loan program, grant programs, et cetera, is a real good way to help people give a little injection. We have to recover from Hurricane Ida. We'll continue to work on different programs. Consumption establishments is something that I hear about a lot, the potential to attract a brewery, a wine bar, things like that. Difficult when we don't have a significant number of liquor licenses. And so, you know, that's not something the SIT can do. That's something the SIT would certainly love to work with the township on. It's not the township's decision either, but you know, I think when we look at other communities that bring in the distilleries, the bars, the breweries, that's a great economic driver. This is a great community for that type of establishment. Our competitive towns do the same thing. There's a, I think I was talking to Tracy earlier this week, there's a brewery in virtually every town that has a SIT in Union County. We don't have one. We don't have a wine bar. You can't even go get a burger and a beer in a sports bar here, you know? There's not an Irish pub, you know? How many towns in America can say they don't have an Irish pub? And so those are things that I think we need to certainly consider in terms of long-term economic development. And then integrating the arts, and Jackie's done a great job with CETA, working with me and trying to connect the arts community, and we're going to do that in a lot of our place making next year. So that's it for me. We've got some photos. I want to thank Jesse and Alex and Christine the clerk and Marla. Christine's last name is not the clerk, but she is... We have an incredible professional staff, and I say this to Richard as deputy mayor. Jesse and the guys are absolutely phenomenal. I've never worked in a community where government was so willing to help SIT. And so it's been a pleasure working for you for the last six months. I hope to do this for many years to come. You guys are great. This is a great SIT, and that is your year-end report, and you guys have done an amazing job. So thank you for all the support you do.
Yeah, yeah. And now to pay for it.
Right, right, exactly. Hard to follow up that, Steve. Thank you.
That was excellent.
Yeah, it's a pleasure to work with you, and it's been terrific. So it is with pleasure that we have the opportunity to pay for next year. In your materials, I think it's Attachment 8. This is, you've seen all these numbers before, but it's slightly reorganized and simplified from a line item perspective, and we did that strategically so that we kind of maximized our flexibility next year in terms of, you know, where money comes from, but we appropriately describe it. So if you look under technology, for example, last year, we had five line items under technology, but in reality, I mean, website support says it all. We didn't need separate website design hosting, maintenance and support out line items. So we tried to collapse it, and the dollar numbers all stayed the same from what we discussed last month, but it's just more, we think, a little more clear and simplified in a way. This is the version that I think will be submitted to the Township Committee if approved tonight, right? So let's just walk through a bit. The income, you've seen these numbers before, $204,000 is the special assessment that unexpended funds of $10,000 is really a placeholder that is an estimate. It's approximate because it's going to change until we know, you know, through December 31. Same with the unexpended funds for the Explore Refresh Program. It's possible, Steve, we'll receive an invoice, like somebody did the work and is now is asking to be reimbursed, but that is the 6650. That dollar amount is the unexpended, allocated, but not yet. We haven't reimbursed the business yet. What is new this year, and you've seen it again, is starting next year, the Township will reimburse us for 50% of our executive director's salary, and that's what that $53,375 number is. So our total revenue is, looks higher than last year, but it really is, it's 274,025, mainly because of the executive director's salary is reflected here as well. Just very quickly going through, you'll see staffing, executive director, that's a contract rate, 106,750. Steve mentioned that, you know, that's his salary, that's in his contract. Technology is there. Same in professional services. The, if we, I think we did approve now legal services, so that's the contractual rate for the coming year, plus a few other dollars that were put in there as a contingency if there's any special project like the bylaws review that we did this year, just so there is a little available monies to support those extra activities. Pointing out in the general operating category, really, that's, you'll see the contingency reserve is flagged there, $20,000. That's what Steve was talking about earlier. Important to have, just for, really for operational reasons, carry forward as we move from one year to the next, make sure we have enough to pay salaries, to pay what we need to do until we get those, the special assessment dollars from the town. Programs. We try to, we refresh the titling a little bit. You'll see what's now called the Economic Stimulus Program, TBD. That is maybe the new name for what we used to call the Explore Refresh Program, right? Similar concept, if approved and discussed, and as a board, we have some money allocated to that program. Live music is combined with holiday and seasonal events. We've spoken how successful the live music program is, so that's all under the $20,000 line item there. Streetscape's projects, signage banners, $21,000. That's where like the additional planters may come from. I think that's where the A-Frame signs, if we choose to do that again next year. But the additional work on Upper Milburn or, you know, really, I think there's a lot of work in Upper Milburn and more work to do up by Kings and things. So we've done the beautification. There may be other things that we want to do as well, right? Those are the highlights. So the grand total, which is for expenses, is $274,000 and some change, identical to the income as identified above, so. Any questions?
If there are no questions, this is something we'd need to move on, correct? All right, so I would ask for a motion to adopt the 2022 operating budget.
So we do not have the authority to approve our own budget. So the Township Committee does. So what you're going to do tonight is you're going to vote to approve this budget. I will then be empowered to take that budget, provide it to the Township Committee in the next few days. I will include a narrative letter that is required under our bylaws and the ordinance. That will state how we spent our money in 2021 and justify why the 2022 budget is assembled as it is. So I just want you to understand that tonight is not a final process. It still needs to be handled by the Township Committee.
All right, so let me withdraw that and come up with a better word. A motion to approve the 2022 operating budget and authorize the executive director to deliver this to the Township Committee. So move. Can I have a second?
A second.
Great, okay. Tracy, if you could roll call, please.
Jemima Culligan?
Yes.
Tracy Katz Levine?
Yes.
Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Nadez Nickel?
Yes.
Michael Parleveki?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Steven Weiner?
Yes.
And we need one more motion, a motion to move into executive session. We have an item of attorney-client privilege and legal advice that's appropriate for executive session. We don't have any other votes to take once we come out, right?
No.
Okay. All right, so I can have a motion to go into executive session? Motion. A second, please.
Second.
I don't, we could do a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want a second one?
No, that's good, thank you.
No, that's good, thank you.
I'm going to kick off and just say thanks for a great year. Steve, thank you for this fantastic report. It's really it's culmination of everybody's efforts and real literal blood, sweat and tears. So it's been a great year. It was a slow start that really picked up a lot of steam. And I think when the real difficult time struck this board and our executive director and Marla really, you know, lived up to that moment. And it's and I think, you know, out of tragedy comes some really good things. And I'm very proud of everything we've done.
And I also want to thank everybody for making such a difference. And just thank you for everybody. When 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 the chips were down, you're in the right place. You're really helping me and I know how important it is to the merchants. So it's great. It's great to make the difference. And everybody in the room is doing it and I'm really grateful and thankful. And also, also for Jackie and Steve, my, you know, Jackie and I, you know, we feel like kind of like ranting.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, just to reiterate what Michael said, but I also that really proud of being part of this organization. We're all volunteers. We work hard for the township that we, you know, live in and love. And and I'm really proud of this year, this past year. And thank you to Steve. I think kind of honing us in and keeping it real at times that we need to keep it real. And then just to remind everybody to shop small this holiday season and support our local businesses so that we can continue to have a vibrant community.
Yeah, just wanted to say that if anyone needed any proof that this organization with Steve has done an incredible job and is needed. Do you remember when COVID-19 hit and we merchants tried to get together to organize a gift card program in order to support the merchants? We raised hardly anything. When Ida hit within no time, we had $400,000 that is not distributed. So if that is not proof that this organization is needed and appreciated in this community, then I don't know what is.
Well, I'll just say.
Yeah, go ahead, Andrew.
I'm bleeding, quit.
You're breaking up, Andrew.
No, you broke up.
Andrew, start from the beginning.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Now we can.
Oh, I was just being cheeky. I said, I don't believe in co-